Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, did anyone contact us back in regards to doing a prayer invitation prior to the meeting?
The only one I have is Bev Vitaleman.
Is Bev here?
And I think she's here today.
Lori, can you hold on one second, let's do the prayer part. Bev?
Good morning Commissioners, Teresa, Mr. Ennis, and Mr. Cordez. Father, we just thank you today for giving us an opportunity to be here and we thank you for our officials today that are in control of governing the county and just making wise decisions and we know that they do their best. We just ask you to help them to continue to focus on the things that are important for Lorraine County and we just believe you for participation from the whole county that we'll all work together for the betterment of our county, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Kocowski has our dog this morning?
Okay, everybody, we've got a cute little wire hair terrier mix, very cute, about two years old, will be available on Friday if you want to come down to Lorraine County Dog Kennel and pick him up. He will be spayed or neutered, practically completely vetted, so we have a lot of dogs, about 25 to pick from, so if you're not interested in a little dog, you want a big dog, we've got big dogs, young dogs, old dogs, all kinds of dogs. It's on Hattaway Street in Columbia, or Harlisle Township, so if you're interested, come on down to the Dog Kennel, look us up on Facebook and our webpage and see what other dogs we have available. Thank you.
in regards to EMA?
Yes.
Alice, could you join us?
You may read it first.
Teresa, would you like to read it? Please, please read it.
Declaring a state of emergency exists in Lorraine County due to the flooding and severe thunderstorms on May 12th and 13th, 2014 hereby invoking to declare portions of the Ohio Revised Code to be in full force and effect in the county for the exercise of unnecessary emergency authority.
Alice?
Thank you Commissioners for passing that proclamation and for inviting me here today. What this proclamation allows us to do is apply for state declaration. The county has to meet a certain criteria in order to do that and we are continuing to take calls from our citizens to see if we meet the qualifications. The qualifications for that state declaration is 18 inches or more water in the living area of your home, which means if it's a basement that's flooded, we have to have a bedroom in that basement in order for it to qualify. Same with a split level. So as of today, we have taken over 1,500 calls from citizens in the county that have sustained damage, not necessarily the major damage, but to them it's been very devastating. So I just want to tell you, say thanks to some of the people that have been able to help us. Our office is made up of three people and without the help of volunteers, we wouldn't be able to do the job that we did. So first of all, I want to thank the American Red Cross for their help that they did and they're going to be here later to explain what all, so I don't want to steal their thunder, but they did work really well with us and we appreciate all the help they've given us. Also, our Community Emergency Response Team, we call them CERT, they're made of citizens in the county, we have over 125 of them, and we were able to pull them in and help us take phone calls, do damage assessment, and do many, many other things, data entry in the office, and we wouldn't have been able to do that job without them as well. We also would like to thank Mr. Cordez and Mr. Bailey for allowing the dumpsters to be put out in the communities. We have several out there for our citizens to take their damaged goods to and we appreciate that help that allowed them to do that. We'd also like to thank some volunteer groups that came in from not even in our community. They're from Stark County, Medina County, they're from all over. One of the groups is called Baptist Ministries. They are right now in Avon and in North Ridgeville, helping residents that have disabilities and/or elderly to clean out their basements. They have done everything but take the drywall and carpets and everything out of the homes. So we'd like to thank them. And also Team Rubicon is made up of veterans throughout the state of Ohio and they came in and helped us assess some of the damage that we had, so that was very helpful for us. And most of all, we'd like to thank our citizens. I wasn't aware of how resilient our community really is, but when Team Rubicon came in to go out and assess all the homes that we had designated for them to look at, most of our citizens have rebuilt and started cleanup process within the two days that the flooding happened. The Weather Service has indicated that this was the worst flood and we had the 500-year flood with this rain. It's the worst one that I've been through and I've been here for 23 years. So it's impressive to know that our citizens have been able to do what they've been able to do. Some have lost everything from washer, dryer, furnace, hot water tank, to their complete house. We had several homes that are totally destroyed from this flood and so we just appreciate the help and the ability that our citizens have been able to show and to get our county rebuilt. So, thank you very much.
You guys, your staff, the volunteers, the help from the Red Cross did a wonderful job. Our phones are all ringing off the hook. Felt bad for a lot of people, I mean, there's some major destruction happening in this, but again, I was talking to Tom Kelly yesterday and, you know, he said anywhere from 500-year flood to 1,000-year in North Ridgeville, the amount of volume of water that came through, there was nothing that would have ever stopped it. But it's nice that we have all the discussions going on around among the communities about talking about regional stormwater at this point where in the past it wasn't that big of a deal, so.
Yeah, the communities have really, really worked hard, the city officials and the citizens have worked really close together and it's really been, you know, it's been devastating, but it's been amazing to see how well everyone in Lorraine County has worked together and pulled together to get us out from underneath this devastation. So we've been really fortunate to have that.
Are people still able to call the 329-5117 number if they have those 18 inches?
Yeah, 18 inches.
Or structural damage to their foundation, right?
That's correct. Yes, we encourage everyone to call because, you know, every call helps us get to that 25 or more homes. We will be having state damage assessment teams come in the county hopefully by next week and they will be going out and verifying our numbers to verify that, you know, what we have is what we actually have. So once that's done, then we will know whether or not we qualify for that state declaration which will allow state funding and/or federal funding to come into the county to reimburse businesses and citizens that had this devastation.
Now, that is at a low interest loan, correct?
It is a, it's called a Small Business Administration Loan, SBA. It's a very low interest, 2% to 3%, paid back over a 10-year or so period of time. However, if they do not qualify for that because of their income, there is a possibility that we can get some grants for them. It will all depend on their damage and their income and things like that. So we, you know, the state will do all that once it gets to that point, if it gets to that point, they'll set up different disaster assistance centers throughout the jurisdictions that were damaged for citizens to come and apply and bring, you know, all their information to that center and then they can apply for the grants or the loans.
And we'll make sure we get that information out to the media, the social media, everyone's aware of what's going on.
Oh, absolutely. We will be so excited. This is the first time Lorraine County has ever reached this disaster declaration as far as the state level if we do and so yes, we have worked so hard to reach that. We will definitely, we'll probably put a billboard out somewhere or something to let everybody know, but yes, we, and we have everyone's phone numbers and we've told them if they haven't heard from us that they can certainly call back, you know, our office to get the information. We're going to put it on the websites, Facebook. Facebook has been wonderful to pass the information along with, so yes, we would definitely be able to get ahold of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I talked to Tom Kelly, a lot of people who weren't able to get through were sending me emails I was forwarding on to Tom. And I told him, you know, I know this is a kind of once-in-a-lifetime storm that we have, hopefully, but taking a look at what we learned from it, having a system where they have to call in in order to report it, where we have the technology that we have, we need to go through, make sure, and I hope you're working on this, if you need assistance, let me know, but creating a digital format that can be put on a website or on social media where individuals can go through, read what qualifies, and then to enter that information and send it on instead of trying to call multiple times, where we get 1,500 calls that the majority of them did not qualify for, what they would have been able to do, a much simpler registration online.
Commissioner, we can certainly understand that problem and with any disaster, with any kind of exercise, with any kind of training, you always have a lessons learned afterwards. And we've already put to work what we need to do to improve from this disaster and what we have in place already is a hotline. We have four phone lines that people could call into with, you know, concerns or questions and we were going to activate that, but at the time we didn't know how much of devastation we actually had. That was Monday night and we'd already put the 329-5117 number out there. That's when we called all our volunteers in, we had four or five people answering all the phone lines that we had. We also did put a form on our website that they can fill out and can send it through email. We've also been monitoring the email, we have someone designated just for that and we've been calling each and every email back that we've received to get their information.
Okay, just again, not critiquing what happened, but just looking for improvements on it. I know I talked with Tom about the form and getting that on the website, but I think it can be taken to the next step where it actually makes it a little easier for individuals to go through and do the application. You have a lot of individuals out there who may not be computer savvy and they need the assistance on that. Again, it's kind of my background, if you need help with it, let me know.
Oh, absolutely. We will certainly be meeting with everyone once this is completed and we get to that level, okay? Thank you.
Did you say the Red Cross wanted to speak this morning, Alice?
I believe they did, yes.
Good morning.
You're not art.
No, I look a little different, huh?
There's a art coming up here over all of yours.
I'm Rita Campbell, I'm the Chapter Exec for the Lorraine County Red Cross and I want to thank you for allowing me to come and just share a bit about what we did through this incident. You know, as you know, EMA is the Incident Commander whenever there's a disaster and they will initiate Red Cross deployment. So we worked so closely with Alice, we had a Red Cross representative in the EOC to work with her on identifying greatest area of need and we went out into the community with our 40-some volunteers, about half of those from our Lorraine County chapter, to be able to meet one-on-one with the residents and to give them cleanup kits to assess if they needed mental health counseling with the Red Cross or any other needs that they had. I have some, a form here that I'm going to leave with you that may help you answer questions if you get calls or anything that you may want to relay to the state. We'll also make this available to Alice at EMA as well. But believe it or not, we issued over 970 cleanup kits and the Red Cross has prepackaged actually a bucket with the bleach and the mop and all of that in. In the city of Lorraine, either we gave them a prepackaged cleanup kit or as we got lower on our supplies, we gave them basically what in essence was in that bucket, 675 cleanup kits in the city of Lorraine, very hard-hit and condensed apartment areas, and about 408 in the city of North Ridgeville. So we were very concerned about opening shelters, which we did immediately that first night in conjunction with EMA's direction, and that was at Fields United Methodist Church in North Ridgeville and as you know, people were evacuated by boat, I mean, it's hard to believe in North Ridgeville, but by rowboat and we had that shelter open, ready to go, Red Cross staffed. We had about 12 residents there overnight, some of them also were from Sheffield Township, from I believe the Berkshire Apartments. And then we later opened the next day as we continued to reassess where the greatest need was. There was another Red Cross shelter at St. John's Lutheran Church, right there in front of the Midway Mall. And then working with the Robert Fowler from the city of Lorraine and Fire Chief Brown identified those Pearl Village Apartments and that area was just really devastated. So we worked with the Boys Club and Girls Club and we had a shelter open there. I also want to tell you too that Salvation Army was so lovely to us from the city of Lorraine and they helped us with feeding and we sent out one of our feeding vehicles out into the hardest-hit areas and as people were working, we were able to give them some sandwiches and, you know, some refreshment that way. So all in all, it was a big effort for us and we appreciate our sister chapters here in northeast Ohio that also sent in all of their cleanup kits just for Lorraine County to help us as well as other personnel. So if you have any questions for us or anything at all that we could do for you, we would, you know, always be open to your input.
Very good job.
So I'm going to leave this with your clerk and she can give to you.
Thank you.
Also moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. Actually, I just want to give a thank you to the garbage men that came down my street. Those guys, poor guys, had their backs that were killing them, all the wet carpet they were picking up and republicans in my area, I just want to thank them publicly for allowing to go over to Baulk pickup. I know people had, normally they do six to eight bags, people had 30 bags out on the lawn, so thank you to those.
I sent two dump trucks there. It was a lot. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances or repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the airport advertised bids to rehab the public apron at the airport, notice being the chronic on May 28th, June 4th and 11th, and mandatory pre-bid at the airport at 10:00 AM on June 12th and open at 2:00 PM on June 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, do you want to tell us how we're funding this? Grant money to the match?
I do because we take a lot of criticism at the airport, as you well know. In fact, I think there was a recent letter to the editor too criticizing the airport again.
It says we make a lot of money at the airport and we're hiding all that money.
We grow a lot of corn at the airport and all that money goes right back into the airport.
Right.
And additional general funds are used to make, shore up the differences between the revenue and the expenses out there, so there's no money being made or hidden at the airport. I wish there was. This is a potential for $1.5 million grant to repair the public apron that is completely deteriorating out in front of the FBO, the fixed-based operation there. We have to go out for bids before we can apply for the grant monies. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing. Normally, we would make our grant application, do all our work, and if we were awarded grant funds, we would start the bidding process. FTA requires a reverse process. We have to have all the engineering done and thankfully, over the last two years, we did the engineering with the small amount of money we get annually from the FTA for this type of work. So that was done and now they want us to bid the project. I really don't like bidding a project before we have funds. Companies out here put a lot of time and effort into preparing these bids and not to be able to tell them that we have funds and if you're the best bidder, we're going to award it is kind of depressing to me. Hopefully, they'll come out and they'll make the bid knowing that we're trying to get the funds. I'm thinking that we may know this summer whether we're going to be able to be successful with that. FTA Detroit has been working with us. Each region in the country competes with each other for funding for their sector that they support. They're prioritizing our project very heavily in Washington and I hope we're going to be successful. And then we'll move forward and do this project, but it's only just a drop in a bucket of all the work that we need to do out there. But we haven't abandoned the airport, we just continue to try to find unique ways of funding it. Now, I did inform you that there's a $150,000 match to this, it's 10% match, but we already had 30 queued up to match part of the funds this year, so it's going to take an advance and some monies from the general fund to be able to bring these federal dollars back. We've made the commitment to the FTA that that match would be there, so we'll probably do an advance to the airport. We've got additional fees on crop farming out there that, by redoing the lease on some of the acreage there. So hopefully, the airport will be able to pay some of that back over the next couple of years with some of the increased revenue, but expenses are going up more than revenues are going up. As I, you'll be seeing that we need a roof repair out there that's going to cost about $35,000 or $40,000 over a small part of the FBO where we house the helicopters and the flight crews for Metro. We're going to probably eat up the rent for the next seven or eight years just fixing the roof out there. So it's a never-ending process, it's an old facility and there's not a lot of activity going on right now, but there could be in the future.
They're having an airshow this weekend?
They are. This is the group that comes out and tries to support a, you know, aeronautic type activities. They do a really good job, they don't ask us for money or anything, it's some inclined supports. The operators out there work with them, they do it because they really enjoy doing this and it's good for the airport when folks come out. We're really not involved with that, we leave them be and if they need something, we try to help them. So it's really a great group of people that are putting this on each year.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners to authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
I do have a couple of personnel issues at the county home, possibly maintenance the kennel, an update on negotiations with our 911 employees and possibly an update on where we're at with one of the sheriff's bargaining units and a potential sale and purchase of real estate. All those topics will allow under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meetings, say we go into executive session and talk about those items that I've specified. Thank you.
What about the investigation for being conducted by the prosecutor? Are they going to be able to make it over?
Oh, yes. The, I thought possibly Jerry would handle that under his request. He was there when I invited Prosecutor Wells to attend.
Just wanted to make sure we had everything on there, so.
Okay, great.
Approve and waive the reading of amendments on May 14th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not to exceed 2,220,000 Series 2014 Capital Improvement Plan Improvement Bond Anticipation Notes for the purpose of paying the cost of construction and acquiring improvements to various county-owned properties, including HVAC improvements, roof repair and replacement, sidewalk, parking lot, storm sewer, landscape, security, and other site and building improvements, together with all necessary appetites thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, this is everything that the last year, year and a half, we've been talking about that had to be done for the major repairs. We're not taking care of all the major repairs, but we're taking care of some of them.
Prioritizing of them?
Yeah, prioritizing.
You read my mind. It's the things that are urgently needed right now that we need to get some work done, but there's quite a bit more of backed-up maintenance that we could do, but these are the issues we need to progress forward with. So over the next year, we'll be doing these projects and that's why we're in, we're going to be needing the money and the cash flow to do that. Clearly, we're going to have to pay debt service on that. Roofs don't last forever. Buildings need work. Infrastructure begins to age and since about 2006 or '07, we've been deferring a lot of maintenance and we can't continue to do that endlessly. So to answer your question, this is some of it. The biggest piece that's missing here, Commissioner, obviously, is the parking deck. It's been a nightmare since I can remember and we haven't, we have not been able to do more work on that. We stabilized it for a few years, but we knew, you know, 10 years ago when we were doing that work, that it was going to require more work into the future. So there's going to be additional things that'll come up that we're going to have to talk about and try to figure out how to get those repairs done, but right now, these are the things that need the most attention.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caleb?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize the issuance of not to exceed 1,450,000 sanitary sewer improvements, Redfern Road Project Bond Anticipation Notes for the purpose of paying the cost of construction and requiring sanitary sewer system improvements, including sewer line, forced main, lift station, and other improvements, together with all necessary appetites thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Discussions.
Commissioner, I need to, I need to request you to table this until next week. There's been some changes in the engineering out there in the Redfern Road Project that's going to push the cost of this differently. I anticipate the sewer going over $2 million. We're working with the developers, not an unexpected change. We're looking at making more portions of it, gravity sewers rather than forced main. Part of this was always going to be a forced main with a pumping station until there's enough build-out to take the sewer more further east and up north where a gravity sewer would work a lot better. Right now, we're going a little bit uphill, but there's not enough development to get us for a cost-effective approach to the northeast. But through engineering, I think we can add more gravity sewer and whenever we can, we always want to put in gravity sewers. So I need to work on the arrangement with the developers with regard to how much of the risk they're responsible with bonds themselves. When I say bonds, that's guaranteed bonds should they not complete their project, so we're not left holding the bag on a $2 million sewer and there's no development. We've worked with this developer before, Mr. Ennis and myself have had very much success with them. Their last project was great, it worked out, we ended up with a lot of no-cost sewers to a lot of residents up there because the sewers went through there and the developer picked up the cost for their sewer and we're working on a similar agreement now. I thought we were done, the agreement's been done, but the increased cost now has to, we have to go back and talk to them about increasing their guarantees within the contract. I expect maybe to be able to have that done in the next week and then we can come back and get a resolution on this. I would like to do all of this work with underwriting and counsel at the same time to save some costs, so I'm going to try to make this work quick.
Thank you. I'll withdraw.
I'll withdraw my second.
Table till next week. Support all workers in Lorraine County to a fair and livable wage and the right to organize if they so choose to provide a better quality of life for their families.
Teresa, we had discussions last week in regards to collective bargaining and local companies, a lot of our discussion, sustainable wages, fair wages, benefits. Mr. Sloan, my last discussion with you was you were going to call me on some of this, I didn't hear from you, so I crafted my own resolution that's been out to the board. I guess I would at this point let the clerk read the resolution. Go ahead.
Just to let you know, I just received this this morning. I mean, it's good, but I wished I would have had it prior to today's meeting.
Well, I was waiting for some other information, make sure I had it right now.
Next week, I'm going to come up with something, spring it on you guys.
I didn't spring, you knew it was coming.
He sprung yet? He's springing, that's my turn.
I didn't spring, I got it done finally.
I'm teasing. Go ahead, it's good, it's good.
I was doing 911 yesterday, remember with you, so.
Whereas the state of Ohio and Lorraine County were built on good jobs in manufacturing, the types of jobs where you could provide for your family today and give your children the best opportunities for tomorrow, and whereas Lorraine County Board of Commissioners[1797.21] the best opportunities for tomorrow, and whereas Lorraine County Board of Commissioners have worked diligently to attract help with expansion and retain companies, so the citizens of our county may maintain that dream of having a good job to provide for their family. And whereas Lorraine County Board of Commissioners have constantly, consistently supported the principles of fair wages and benefits for workers, not only in the manufacturing segment, but all workplaces. And whereas through past resolutions, the majority of the board has supported workers' right, as in Resolution number eleven, one twenty-five, dated February twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, opposing Senate Bill Five and the attack on the workers, including police, fire, and teachers, in regards to the right to collective bargaining. And whereas through past letters of supporting Senate Bill twenty-eight eighty-four and House Bill fifty-five forty-two introduced by Congresswoman Betty Sutton, Bring Jobs Home Act, the majority of the board has supported tax credits for companies moving operations back to the United States to provide good jobs not only here in Lorraine County, such as the announcement of the Ford Motor to move work from Mexico to its plant in Avon Lake, but across our country as well. And whereas this resolution supports and urges all employers to provide livable and sustainable wages for their employees, and whereas we support an increase in the minimum wage so our residents can have a better standard of living and provide a better quality of life for their families, and whereas the citizens of Lorraine County welcome the creation of new jobs, they also expect that these employers will pay a fair and livable wage in a safe workplace and treat employees with respect, thereby creating a more stable, committed, and productive workforce. And whereas we support the ability of workers to organize as they so choose with employees and employers, following all guidelines set forth by the National Labor Relations Act, to collectively bargain for fair wages, benefits, and working conditions. Now therefore be it resolved, we, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, support the efforts of workers to join together to seek fair wages that support their families and allow them an opportunity to help fuel our economy.
I'll make the motion, and then we'll have a little bit of discussion.
One second.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you. We discussed a lot of issues last week that came from the floor, or all the commissioners and the county administrator participating. I tried to include those in a lot of those, and that doesn't make everybody happy, but I think it gets the message across. We support the right to collectively bargain. But I did know Commissioner Kokoski had a discussion with the county prosecutor, and then I followed up with him yesterday evening, and probably where we are in regards to that because there was discussions on what the Board of Commissioners can do as a Board of Commissioners. Jerry?
Commissioner, last week after the discussion, I went back to the office. Mr. Will and some other prosecutors, excuse me, brought up to my attention that they had attended a seminar, I believe, at the State Prosecutors Association, in which a concern had been raised, several concerns actually been raised regarding government bodies getting involved in private labor disputes. Unfortunately, none of them could remember exactly what that discussion was, and I haven't had a chance to do a thorough research on it, but my understanding is it generally had to do with a couple of issues. One, the issue of a government using taxpayer dollars to become involved in interfering with the private labor matters. Secondly, and coincidentally, we discussed a federal grant here this morning. As I think you all are aware, when we accept grant monies, we usually sign one, two, three pages of all kinds of assurances. It's my understanding that from time to time, there may be language in those grants that have some kind of restrictions with our interference with private labor disputes. I don't know if the issues here would be qualified as a private labor dispute, or I can't give you any specifics about that, but the caution that was given to the prosecutors is, you know, be careful when your body attempts to get involved in private labor disputes because there may be federal regulations and restrictions in this grant language that you are by accident violating. So I obviously, we have hundreds of grants out there. I can't tell you whether we have such language, and I'm sorry, I don't have definitive law that I can cite to you. All I can do is pass on to you that caution that was given to the Prosecutors Association.
Well, you had vetted this yesterday afternoon with the clerk, correct? The resolution that was just presented now?
Yeah, yeah. And this talks about directing a resolution to a specific, again, labor dispute.
Right.
So in general?
A general dispute or a general...
Statement.
Statement is okay, but something directed to a specific, you know, identifying a specific employer or private labor dispute could be problematical. I just wanted to follow up our discussion of last week.
Tom, I mean, comments, you were looking at Jerry, so.
Well, yeah, I talked to Jerry yesterday. I didn't talk with Mr. Will. I saw his email that went out through Sandy, and basically, with the resolution that I believe, and I don't want to speak for you, A.D., was basically, they were looking for something that just said, we're looking for a fair process that would allow them the right to organize.
Which I've included in this. I tried to do.
Right. Well, in this here, I'll be honest, like this Bring Jobs Home Act, other than the name of it, it was a political stunt by the Congresswoman. When you actually went through and you followed what it would do, it did nothing. You could actually close down a factory over in Germany, bring a couple of jobs home to the United States, and then open up another company in France, and you would actually get a deduction. So I think a lot of this here, this is more political, political agenda here. What they were looking for, and again, I don't want to speak for them, is they were just looking for something very simple, saying that they have employees that felt this way, that they weren't being represented. I know we have Camp Coe here. They would like to come up and talk about it. Would give them the opportunity to do it. They were just looking for a general statement showing that the Board of Commissioners would be supportive in that effort. From what the gentleman told me, he, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you believe that you are being supportive in allowing them to organize. If you would like to come up to the microphone and talk, that would be fine. We could have someone from UAW, Jim Sloan, if you want to come up and talk about this as well. Feel free to come up. But this very general one, I think, just kind of goes back to, you know, just saying basically, you know, we're all in favor of cute babies and sunshine and lawn pops, so.
I think this talks about the livable wage. It brings up issues that are out there. It talks about the past support of the board.
Right.
Workers' rights. It doesn't state anybody's names.
Yeah. Well, with the minimum wage one, and UAW knows this because we've had talk about it. I don't believe and I don't support increasing the minimum wage, so that would have to come out for me to even consider this.
There was an invitation. If you like, we'll do some dialogue now. Sure, sir, just come up and introduce yourself.
We could go to different mics if you want to have dialogue. Jim, if you want to come up here?
If you want to engage in a debate.
Yeah, we're not doing debates.
Good morning, commissioners and officials, Lori, Ted, and Tom. My name is Dave Smith. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Chemical. I want to say that we value our employees and respect our employees to the point where our employees are actually, we believe they're partners of the organization, and we are investing in their training, their development, and the future of not only Chemical, but Lorraine County and the citizens of Lorraine County. We actually, our employees participate in our profit-sharing contributions annually to the point where some of our profit-sharing is up to twenty-five percent of their actual annual salary. So we value them, we respect them, and we treat them as partners of our company. Myself, I have lived in Lorraine County most of my life, and I'm proud to say that I'm able to be part of something that is helping with the growth and economic development of Lorraine County. We opened our doors, we're a family-owned company that opened our doors in nineteen ninety-nine. We started with about thirty-five employees. We've expanded four times. We were up to about two hundred to two hundred and fifty employees a couple of years ago, and recently, in the last couple of years, we have almost five hundred employees now. We have jobs that range everywhere from a production assembly associate to quality professionals, tool and die personnel, maintenance people, engineers, restroom operators. We have all factions of levels and job positions, job professional positions, that allow us to provide for the county and for the citizens of the county. We have future plans. We are currently bringing in business from a plant that's actually closing in Canada, a plant that is struggling cost-wise, and we, over, we have already started. Over the last couple of months, we've brought in a few new assembly lines, and over the next six months, we plan to bring in six or seven more. It could equal as a hundred to a hundred and fifty more jobs, and we're hiring for almost every position we have in the facility. We're hiring for production associates. We're hiring for tool and die. We're hiring for maintenance. We're hiring engineers. We have to put on that many people in the next six months. We do use a temporary service to help offset the absenteeism and things in order to run the facility because hiring is tough, trying to find enough people and people with the skill set to be able to perform the operations we need to be successful. It has been tough. That has been a struggle for us for several years now, and we continue to look for ways to do that, to improve our hiring process, to continue to provide compensation and benefits packages that allow us to be competitive, to continue to grow, and to continue to provide jobs. But we've been a huge success story, and we want to continue to be able to do that and be part of the growth and economic development of the county. We're committed to that. We're committed to our employees, and we'll continue to do that. And I'd also like to say that we, we don't, excuse me, one second, that we're going to continue to recognize every employee's right to be part of any union, and we also continue to support the right for any employee not to refrain from doing so. So we don't want to impede that process, but we will continue to support our employees, the county, the city of Lorraine, and do everything possible to continue with our growth and economic development.
You know, when the UAW brought the resolution to me last week for support, I met with several of the employees, and they had some pictures, and in the pictures, it appeared that there were, may have been some intimidation factors. They were outside, and you had an employee that was taking pictures. And I'll give you the opportunity because you told me your side is...
I'd like to actually have that center on safety-related issues for us, and I'll actually let our safety manager speak to that, if that's okay.
But I'm glad to hear, and that's what, basically, what I was looking for with the resolution or support letter, was just basically to say, you know what, we support these guys to make sure that they have a fair and balanced process where if they choose to be in a union or not to be in a union, they have that opportunity.
Absolutely.
And you're in total agreement with that.
We actually had a plant meeting with all of our, all of our employees. We did it with every shift. We run twenty-four hours a day, five days a week, sometimes six, seven days. We had employee meetings with all of our employees. We explained the bargaining, collective bargaining process to them, and they're, so that they understood it and had the right to be able to choose. We went through that with all of our employees. The incident you're referring to, we have many employees who are very concerned. We have employees who aren't sure about what this means to them and what their futures are. They've never been involved in anything like this before. So there's feelings, emotions, animosity, a lot of things occurring within our workplace right now as a result of this, and we have many people asking for help. The incident of, that you're referring to, there are multiple things that have been occurring, but the safety of our employees is very, very important, and when there's people standing in the road, stopping cars, and doing things that are adding to that animosity and that feeling of being insured, our safety manager, who is here today also, just tried to speak with his employees, to ask them to understand and be concerned for all the people that are coming and going from the plant. That's all that was. So.
And as far, you're committed, you're going to go through with the expansion? You're not trying to use this as leverage?
We are bringing in new business right now. We did in the last two months. We have more coming in the next six months. We are hiring as many people as we can hire right now into the positions we need. Our expansion plans relative to the business and economic conditions, we evaluate that all the time based on what's happening. We haven't stopped anything, but we have to continue to...
And you're committed to Lorraine County and the city of Lorraine?
What's that?
I said, you're committed to Lorraine County and the city of Lorraine.
Absolutely. We have been, and we have been for the last fifteen years, and we continue to do that.
I spoke with Mayor Rittenour the other day, and he said the same thing. You're repeating that. Said you've been there a long time. You've really developed that whole end of what someday will be an industrial park, I guess. But, yeah, I was there a couple of years ago for one of your events where we've been cutting for an expansion. We were invited as a Board of Commissioners, so. Like I said, anytime you're going through an organization process, and that's the right of the employees to do that, it's just the, any company shouldn't impede that process, so.
And we have no intentions to do so. So we do have a few employees here, also...
I don't think we need that. There was just some things happened last week I think we need to address. We don't need to bring everybody up unless there's pertinent information. Jim, are you going to respond? Because you did most of the talking last week, probably, or is there somebody to defer to?
I'm going to have a couple people speak, and then I'll do some...
Would you like to open it up, and then you can introduce these couple of people? You led the charge. You know the rules, Jim. You've got to be at the microphones. You're fifteen minutes of fame.
Hey, and Jim, I'm going to ask you a question while you're walking up here. With everything that...
You hurt yourself?
It's got a week back, about a week ago.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
From what the gentleman from Camp Coe stated and his comments, that he's willing to work with you and have a fair and open process, and basically doing this here, do you still feel that there's a resolution that is needed from the Board of Commissioners at this time?
Yeah, I'd like to know why, your statement of giving everyone the right to organize, that's how, you know, the National Labor Relations Board gives us that. That's in theirs. We need to expedite this by putting Chemical in there. That needs to be in there, and I feel it strongly, it needs to be in there. I heard the gentleman, I believe, your assistant plant manager, or you're the plant manager?
Vice President.
Vice President? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to lower you on the scale.
Vice President of Operations.
Of Operations, okay. If I understood you right, you're giving people the right to organize?
Yes.
And you took them in, and you explained to them about organization?
Yes.
That, so you feel that would be your job to organize, to explain to them about organizing like the same way Walmart brings their people in to organize, tells them how bad unions are, what they do to them, go through that whole process? Because I've sat through that.
Jim, Jim.
No, I'm just asking. I want to know...
We're not doing a debate. That was...
I'm not debating him. I'm asking him questions.
Okay.
Okay? And when people are asking for help, what kind of help is he getting them? I mean, I've heard horror stories, eighteen degrees. We don't, we turn off the heat. You know, if you want to get warm, work faster, you know? And just for my own information, who, maybe Mr. Ennis can answer this, and see if he's from the Prosecutor's Department. Now I'm going to let some of the other folks come up. Who, I mean, except for a general overview of a meeting that somebody's at, who said that you couldn't put Chemical into a resolution? Because we have, Ford's name was in that resolution.
I think I explained that...
But you said the general, did some attorney tell you that from the state? Did some, I mean, who told you that?
Well, I wasn't there. I understand...
Well, somebody had to give you direction to tell these guys.
Dennis Will.
Dennis Will said that. Okay. Dennis Will told you that you couldn't put Chemical into this? Okay, that's fine. That's all I wanted to know.
Dennis Will said he and other attorneys were at a seminar where they, there was a caution issue.
Okay.
I explained that caution very clearly, that there might be language in federal grants that we have signed that said we gave assurances... -there might be language in federal grants that we have signed that said, "We gave assurances that we would not interfere or become involved with, with labor disputes."
Okay.
I don't know whether what you have here is a labor dispute. I just have to issue a caution to the commissioners that without looking through all our hundreds-
Okay.
...of grants that we have, there may be language in there that, that has some restrictions that may impact on it.
When we, okay, thank you.
Can I interject you from my side of it? And I said last week, I didn't want to put a company name in it. I believe it's the board of commissioners' job and administrations across the county to attract companies here and help them with expansion, retain them, whatever they may need to keep them here. I believe it's labor's job to organize those employees. I think you've raised it to a level here that everybody knows we're talking about Cameco. I'm not about to put their name into a resolution that I'm going to vote yes on.
Ted, you made that very plain last week.
Okay, I like that. That's what I'm saying.
You made that very plain to me last week, which, which you and I are going to have to, of course, agree to disagree on.
Without a doubt, Jim.
Okay. We are going to agree to disagree on that.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I, I honestly need to, I believe that needs to be there. Also, how many-
Jim, let me, let me just put a question to you. What if, for instance, this was the board of commissioners that supported the other side, would you want a governmental entity coming in and passing resolutions denouncing your union?
They, they could if they wanted to. We would fight it every-
Do you really think that's appropriate for a government to come in and take sides?
You know what? If, if, if it was, if, since, since this is, since this is a, something out of the National Labor Relations Board, since this is something that the federal government gives us the right to do, I wouldn't expect them to do that, because they would be, they would be violating federal law.
Exactly.
They would be, but, but this is not violating federal law. This gives us the right to do this. And, and of all those people that they're bringing in, I know you guys are going to do your research, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you guys are going to do your research. How many people are part-time, and how many people are full-time over there?
Don't know their full-time equivalent. Most of the numbers we would get from that would be through the city of Lorraine. They'd have an FD, full-time equivalent.
Okay. There's, we're gonna, I'm gonna have a couple folks. I'm not going to take up all the time. I'm gonna have them come up, because we're going to disagree on this over and over and over and over again. Cameco sounds so good on paper, like I've been through so many of these, but when it gets right down to it, they lie. And I'll, I'll, I'll put it very simply. But I don't want to, I don't want to get into that. We're not in debate. We're not going to get into all that stuff. But here's the one thing I will request, and I want to request this. I want a tape of this meeting.
Oh, it'll be available. They all are, Jim.
Okay. I want a tape of this meeting. Okay. Some of the guys from-
Jim, Jim, so you know, I think it's through the clerk.
Through the clerk? Teresa?
For the video.
For the video.
That'll be available next week through the records.
Next week. What day, what day can I pick it up?
Uh, not till, probably next Friday.
Next Friday? A week from, a week from this Friday?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
We have some folks from Cameco that like to speak.
If you can introduce yourselves, sir, and tell us where you're from.
If I could say one thing?
Yes.
It is shown on the local ca, local cable channels on Saturday at noon and Monday at eleven, just so everybody knows.
On the college channel.
Okay.
Morning. Can you just state your name and address?
Good morning. My name's Daryl Everhart. I'm from Elyria, two twelve Connecticut Drive. I've been employed with Cameco for seven months now. And in this time, I've endured below freezing conditions in the winter time inside the plant. The ventilation system there for the, the robotic welders is inadequate. There's haze everywhere. I've had trouble breathing due to that. I have a, an associate's degree, but there's no work out there in my field, so I've been forced to take factory jobs again. And I feel that at Cameco, they need to improve on, on the wages and, and overall conditions of the plant. I've noticed that there's fans, exhaust fans, that do not work back on the paint line. And it gets extremely hot back there. Cameco is in the bottom ten percent in the United States as far as pay wages go in the seating industry. And that's a big concern of mine. I got my, my daughter-in-law living with me to help me make ends meet. Even, even with the, with the expansion of Cameco, a lot of us employees are wondering how safe our job really is as far as, e, e, even if you're expanding, you still close down with or without a union. And we're not trying to hurt Cameco or, or destroy the company by wanting a union. All we want is a, a safe work environment with fair wages compatible with, with the nation's industry. I mean, Ohio was built on manufacturing jobs that allowed blue collar workers to advance into middle class. And my coworkers and I also have concerns, you know? We want a binding contract instead of a handbook that states, you know, subject to change without notice. We want something that's, that's more permanent.
You want fair workplace conditions. Sure. I understand that. That's extremely important.
Correct. And that's all I have to say.
Well, good luck in your organization effort.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, my name's Matthew Fox. I'm at two forty-seven George Street, right here in Elyria. Until recently, I worked for Cameco for two years. I started in two thousand twelve. I started there as a quality inspector, and I worked my way up to an area lead after only five months. I've had zero disciplinary record there. Never missed a day, unexcused. I missed one day for my uncle's funeral last summer. That was excused and paid. Earlier this year, I became involved with the UAW organizing committee. And once that came public, once we went public, once my name was essentially a part of the public record, a lot of things changed. I believe personally that I was targeted for my organizing activities. I, there's a long story behind that that I won't go into right now, but I haven't been to work at Cameco for the last month. Dave Smith brought up the plant-wide meeting. He did have a plant-wide meeting. He did a lot of talking, and very little of it was true. There was a lot of misinformation. There was a lot of talking about it without talking about it. When it comes to plant closings, he would bring up all of the different plants across the country that have closed, who happen to be union activities. And every time he would say that, he would say, "Not saying that Cameco is gonna do this, but this is what happens." Possibly because of what happened to me. A lot of other people who had previously been in favor of forming our union have been hesitant. They're worried about losing their jobs now. We don't want to hurt Cameco. I worked there for two years. You don't stay at a place for two years if you don't care. If you don't care, you'll find something else. We want a voice. We want to be heard. I love the fact that they're here. I really do. I'm glad that it's not just the UAW organizing committee here. But I think it's ridiculous that it takes us coming to the county commissioners to get the other side to sit down at a table and listen to us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sometimes it takes those efforts for them to listen.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Troy Dooley. I am an employee at Cameco. I've, I'm going into my twelfth month of-
We need your address, Troy, too, for the record.
Oh, one seventy-seven Longfellow Street, Elyria, Ohio.
Thank you.
Going into my twelfth month of employment at Cameco. I am a full-time resident of Lorraine County my whole life, born and raised in Elyria. So, you know, I've taken notice through my years of growing up, and I'm gonna be twenty-eight, you know, people that, that have manufacturing jobs that, like Ford, or even other companies that aren't union or whatever, you know, a lot of people took pride in their work. And, you know, they were proud to say that they worked there in making those manufacturing parts or whatever they were making. And Cameco's slogan is pride at, at the plant. And they talk about, they are, they're, all this expansion and stuff, and the possibilities of over five hundred p, uh, employees and, and, and all, all these new jobs. But how, how good are those jobs if people aren't staying in them? If the conditions aren't good enough for a temporary that, you know, for someone that's down and out of luck and really needs that opportunity, and they don't even make it to the first break before they leave because they don't like the conditions of where they work, then I don't really see a beneficial part to the community or, or to the company of, of, you know, adding those future employees. And it's, it's been a struggle for the company with absenteeism and stuff. They can't keep anyone in there because of the conditions. And I would just like to say, I'd really appreciate and wish that Cameco would give us our fair and equal opportunity for the right to organize.
Well, I would hope so at this point. It's been raised to that level. I think everybody's aware of it now. There shouldn't be any more issues. It would be up to the employees' choices of where they want to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Was there anything from the safety side? You said something, safety, yes, no? Hang on, ma'am. I had invited them. I didn't see your hand. Ma'am, ma'am, hang on a second. He was gonna come up. You wanna let her first? Late? Ma'am, go ahead. I didn't see anybody else stand up there, so I went back here where you said the safety guy, and then you got up. So, go ahead.
Sorry. I was kind of hesitant as well. My name is Veronica Katona. My address is twenty-five eleven East Forty-second Street, Lorraine. I've been at Cameco for about a year and a half. When I got to Cameco, I was with NESCO. And when I first got with NESCO, I begged them for six months to put me at Cameco. Because when I read about it, I just knew in my mind that was the job for me. I fell in love with the idea of a factory job where you get your forty hours guaranteed, you get overtime. But after a year and a half of being there, I'm not so sure anymore. I just got a thirty-four cent raise. I've been there a year and a half. I started at nine when I was with NESCO. Then when I got hired in, I went to ten twenty-five. And then that was in January of last year. And I just got to eleven. And I know ninety-six percent of the assembly area, and now I am going to conquer WIP and learn all the machines I possibly can. For me, it's a personal gain. Every time I go to work every day, I strive to see if I can beat my record of hitting a production number on a certain machine. I strive to do that every day. It just makes my workday go better. It lets me know that I not only helped Cameco produce parts, but I also gained personal strength in beating my records and making the day interesting. The environment Cameco has is very friendly. I love all the employees. I don't want to leave Cameco. I love Cameco. I do. But with the pay rate, my boyfriend and I can't even get a place together because we can't save money because they don't, they don't provide enough wages for us to be able to do that. We're barely making ends meet. We're living with his mother helping her because she gets social security. Some families don't have it that easy to save money. And I don't want us to be moving out in two years. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's hard. And I don't want to hurt Cameco. I want to support Cameco in their expansion and more jobs. I believe in that. But at the same time, when you provide more jobs to a hundred and fifty more employees, that also prevents you from giving the people who have been there dedicating themselves every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, sweating to freezing. I agree with everyone else when they said the conditions. It is cold. I have to wear two pairs of gloves. I have to wear leggings under my jeans, two pairs of socks. I have to wear a coat. You can't move all around in machines if you're bundled up. And in the summertime, it is god-awful hot. It will, if it's ninety outside, it gets up to a hundred and thirty in there. And the fans are never cleaned, never maintained. I just want a healthy working environment with better wages so we can all just be happy and work together. Because I want to work with Cameco to make them. I feel that Cameco is a place that I can see myself in five, ten years. I want to move up in Cameco. But if the wages don't increase, then I'm forced to go somewhere else. I could go to Walmart their shift and make the same I'm making now, after I've been working there a year and a half. But I could start out at eleven at Walmart tomorrow. It's very frustrating that the more we know, we're still not getting acknowledged for it. I feel that I'm scared to be up here right now because I'm scared that I am going to be on the target list to get fired now. And I can't afford that. And I don't want to leave Cameco. I want you to know, I'm not against you guys. I'm just trying to support the future. So, when I have a family in the future, I want to know that I have saved money to have a child. I'm about to be twenty-six tomorrow, and I have no children because I want to do it the right way and wait and save money. So, I don't have to make a hard decision of, "My child needs diapers, but I need gas in the car." But I'll never be able to have a family if I can't save money. But if the wage is increased, I would be able to do so. And I want to look out for my future, my family, and my future children's future, as well as the future of Cameco. I just want everyone to be happy.
Thank you. That was very good.
Thank you.
You sound like a good worker.
I'm sorry?
I said, I said you sound like a good worker.
Yes, actually, I am. I try to do as much overtime as possible. And I don't do just the bare minimum just to get by. Like I said, I strive to beat my record on a machine, not just do the hourly rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Skip, if you could go to that mic, if you want, to close your one.
My name is Skip Skovka. I reside at four zero nine five seven Slife Road, Lagrange, Ohio. I've been an employee at Cameco for six years, four months to this date. All right? Manufacturing runs lean. You all know that. All right? They hire through NESCO. They bring in temporaries, just like all the rest of the companies I've worked with. I worked for many companies already. Little bit about me. I was in Local Seventy, UAW, for twenty years at S and Z Tool and Die. I was in management twice there, tier-three manager. I was also the chief steward. Okay? So, I know a little bit about both sides of the story here. So, like I said, they're running lean, just like all other companies. They need people to come in that are going to work, and they're going to have good attendance. All right? They look for that. They go through their ninety-day period. Many of these young people today feel that, "Well, you know, I could take a day off. So what?" All right? All right? They're, for some reason, they, they need their time off. All right? I think I've got three points in six years, all right, with my attendance. And the attendance policy that they have here is just the same as what we had in the union. There's no, there was no difference. Actually, they're a little bit more lenient here, all right, without, without a union. All right? You can be reprimanded. You'll get pointed. And then they might say, "Well, you know, okay, this is that." All right? We're gonna let it slide. Okay? Okay. They have something that's in the attendance policy, all right? If you have a three-month perfect attendance, they give you a bonus. I didn't have that in the union. All right? And if you have perfect attendance for the whole year, you get an additional bonus of a hundred dollars. All right? Which is encouraging your employee to be, all right? I did it, I, I did it for a few years. I got perfect attendance. I was real happy to get that extra hundred dollars at the end of the year and as, as an additional bonus. All right? So, like I said, the ninety-day temps and stuff, that, that we have people in the companies already gone, where people have gone their ninety days and had some problems. All right? So, they give them another ninety days. They don't dismiss them from the temporary services. They let them try it again, another ninety days. All right? Who have, and, and, you know, trying to get their productivity out, so on and so forth. Because just like in any company, running lean, if you're short a few people, then you have to scramble to try to get your productivity up. They have profit sharing, 401K. The 401K, they have a match, which is good. All right? And the young people really do need that. You know, put a couple of bucks away, and, and the company's willing to put a little, a couple bucks towards you, too, to help you out. I'm a little bit late for that. As you notice, I'm probably a, a little older than most here. And they have the health insurance with options. They have the eye in the dental plan, which in many companies I didn't have- They have the eye and the dental plan, uh, which in many companies I didn't have, all right? And as far as your, uh, your resolution here that you're, you're working on, all right? I really feel that, uh, Lorraine Commissioners should stay neutral on this, all right? If you want future business, they're, they're gonna read, just like in the article that was in the paper, it didn't look, didn't look very good that you're considering maybe taking, allegedly taking a side, all right? To, to go with other individuals, all right? Because it, Lorraine has, we have shipping, we have railways, we have trucking, it's a very good location. And if other companies are gonna relocate and want to come up here, and they say, well, wait a minute, the county commissioners, they're kind of like siding with someone else that, uh, you know, we, they, they're gonna want to be involved to tell us how to run our company, all right? Let's go to Medina County or some other county, all right? And I've been a, I've been here for twelve years. I was thirty-one years in Cleveland, moved out here twelve years ago. And we love it out here. Lorraine is good. And, uh, I, uh, I really, I really, uh, that's, that's why I'm here, is because I, I want to encourage the commission to know that, uh, when Mr. Eines said that there could be problems there, so on and so forth, I'm kind of happy to hear that. I've been, I'm a, I consider myself a loyal American, all right? I was pulling out of the driveway and, again, we had the union people trying to stuff leaflets to us and, you know, giving us the, yeah, we, look at what, we're not even there yet, and we already got you more money, all right? Well, somebody from, allegedly, maybe inside internally, uh, has been cluing the union in and letting them know that, hey, this is it, this is the target date for May first, you know? So they got the ball rolling and, um, the management did last year already tell the employees, they're gonna work on this, they're gonna try to fix things, try to make things right. In this morning's art, uh, uh, Morning Journal, I believe it is, they have, they had an article, I was interviewed there, and it explained it. But, uh, uh, being in the union, being chief steward, also being in management, uh, right now, it's kind of a, a delicate time for Cameco. You know, they're bringing in the new business. They're going to expand. They have no intention of stopping, from what I understand. Dave Smith did put papers out, written papers, explaining to the employees, because they were concerned, they didn't know what's going on, or, and some of them have not, never been in a union, they're not sure of what's going on. And, and they're a little confused. So he put out a paper, all right? And he put it in writing, all right? Uh, and from what I understand, um, the union, and I'm not against unions, I'm, I'm for unions, I was, like I said, chief steward. They haven't put out anything in writing to tell the employees, this is what we're gonna get you. They can't guarantee that. All right? And yet, they say, they, they want to say that what the company is putting out is threatening? No, he's just putting the facts out on the table, what can and cannot happen. All right? And like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm a loyal American. They were, they were giving me the, the business out there in the middle of the street, and one yells, well, at least you bought an F-150. Well, yeah, I do, I support, I support, I support America. I support the American economy. I support the big three, UAW, because that's where they're really needed. And there, it would help dictate our economy, all right? And so, uh, I've never owned a foreign car, and I'll, but I'll continue to buy American cars. And maybe that's a problem with some of our economy, because a lot of these people, if you took thirty percent of the people that are buying foreign cars, if they bought American cars, just like we did sev- in the, back in the seventies, eighties and nineties, our economy grew, just like as the American auto industry grew. So you want to blame somebody for something, for the poor wages and stuff, blame the people that are driving the foreign cars. I buy American cars because I support America. Thank you.
Yeah, that's where I, I said, I, I believe, long as there isn't interference from the employer, that, uh, any organization has the ability to organize the workforce, if the workforce so chooses, Skip. So that's why I wouldn't name a company directly. I do support the principles within, uh, the National Labor Relations Act that we spoke to, the ability to organize and collectively bargain. That's why we opposed Senate Bill Five when they put it on the ballot, to take away those rights. It's in there, but to target a single company on that, I don't think that's the board of commissioners' job. We're here to oversee operations of county government. But we can deliver our opinion, as long as it isn't an attack. And I think, uh, the prosecutor's office has added that to Commissioner Kokowski's request, and what Jerry spoke about here. So I'm very comfortable with the resolution. I think it states where the board of commissioners stood in regards to, uh, workforce and livable wages and the ability, ability to form a union and collectively bargain, then it becomes up to the employees to decide that.
Right. It does. And, uh, the accusations against the company trying to squelch this is definitely not true.
Anytime there are negotiations going on or discussions of organizing, there are stories come out?
Absolutely.
And nothing's all perfect in any work world. We would hope that there are safe work conditions there, they aren't uncomfortable. They are being treated respectfully, you know? Normal. I'm an employer, so I understand those things. You try to do that with your employees.
Okay. All right, thank you.
This has been difficult, only because, um, you know, when, when the union comes before us and we want to help the union, because we are always, you know, been proactive in union issues, um, but then you get employees that call you and say, hey, I work for Cameco, that's not happening. We're, if we want to join a union, we can join a union, they're not impeding that process. So, you know, you, there's two sides to every story, obviously, always, and somewhere in the middle is the truth, and everybody's truth is their own, so, um, it's been a difficult, trying to decide what to do with this. And then when the prosecutor's office said to me, you know, well, I don't think this is something that you guys should be getting involved in as, as far as naming an actual company, um, it kind of gave us a way out, I guess you'd say, but, um, I, I do like the, uh, the resolution that you put together. If Mr. Williams is not, um, happy with the part about Congresswoman Betty Sutton's, I think we could take that piece out. But I think the rest of it is, um, you know, it's, it's letting the union know, and the people at the company, which was my biggest concern last week, was, you know, if this is really happening and, you know, we want those people to know that work there, that we do care, that, you know, they have the right to organize, and we don't want them to be intimidated. But then we hear that, but they're not being intimidated. So, you know, we're, it's not for us to decide up here whether, you know, what side's being more honest or where the truth is, lays with this, but, um, we have the law that protects your rights to, to organize. I feel bad for the young lady who wants to start a family, and we have some positions here that start less than what you're making, you know? So I think the minimum wage needs to be increased across the board. I think that would help everybody. I don't know, it's, it's a difficult thing, but I do, I do like the resolution, even though I just got it this morning, uh, that Mr. Kalo worked on over the week.
Well, you shouldn't have had me had to write the speech in Speaker State at nine one one.
I know.
If you'd done that, I'd have this done earlier, Commissioner.
Excuses, excuses. So Mr. Williams, if we take that section out about Betty Sutton and the Bringing Job Home Act out?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not into very generic resolutions, so if you, this is something you want to pass, you can go ahead and take a vote on it.
I'll call for the question then.
Is it everybody that wanted to speak, have a chance to speak?
I've called for the question, Lori, it's ended.
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Ennis.
What is that? What is that? Yeah, you're here, so.
Mr. Ennis. You have to respond, Mr. Ennis.
It's not a, an issue that needs to be voted on.
Mr. Ennis, can you respond?
It's a resolution.
Present isn't a vote.
Agenda that requires a vote, it's on the agenda.
You said I can abstain, I abstain.
You abstaining?
Better than present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Number fifteen on the prosecutor's, authorize employment of the Chander Law Firm, LLC, in the Mount Natix C twenty-five thousand, providing representation to the judges of Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas, in dispute with commissioners regarding adequacy and suitability of facilities in the old county courthouse for the adult probation department.
I'll make a motion on this and then discussion, please, with the prosecutor.
One second.
Discussion.
Mr. Ennis, uh, in regards to the Court of Common Pleas hiring legal counsel in their dispute with us, that they're saying they don't have adequate facilities for adult probation department, where does that leave us in regards to us being represented? Is there a conflict of interest with the county prosecutor's office, and do we have to authorize dollars, Russ Scott, and hire, hire our own legal firm?
That would be correct, Commissioner.
Do we need to add another agenda item on here, authorizing the board of Lorraine County Commissioners to exercise an option to hire outside legal counsel?
The county commissioners has that authority already.
Okay, we don't need a resolution within?
No, you're right.
So, um, is the pro- are they going to use their own special funds to pay for these attorney fees, or they, no?
No, this is our money. General fund money, the taxpayers' money.
According to their, their own, um, whatever he is, administrative guy, uh, said that they have over a million dollars to put towards the project if they saw a fit, saw that the place where we were putting them was suitable to their needs. So they obviously have a million some dollars sitting out there in a special fund somewhere, so why not use that special fund to pay for this?
It's an excess of a million, but they don't see fit to pay for it. So, that's why they're asking us, that's why we're passing a resolution, authorizing the twenty-five thousand.
To be fair to them, they're saying that they can use a special fund for projects. Litigation, I, I don't think would be considered a project. I, I understand what the intent is, but...
Actually, they, they could, it's not just projects. They could use that money to offset cost of running the courts to the general fund. Okay? The, uh, I, I believe that they had done that some years ago, uh, with some of those funds, Commissioner Kalo, you may remember that, I... Yes, I do. They, we're, these are special funds designating the law clerks as magistrates, and then this year, because they said there was a decrease in the amount of special fund availability, the magistrates were going back on the general fund, which increased their budget, I think, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars approximate this year. I think, am I about close to Lisa?
So, you know, it, it, how, how those dollars are ultimately positioned, uh, can more fully support the general fund, should they choose?
The truth, we don't, we don't have a say in this, really.
Without a doubt. I agree with you there.
I'm vote present, I don't know about that.
Wait, wait, that's two weeks in a row.
Maybe three weeks in a row.
This is just too spooky.
I know. We have to start drinking, I guess. I'm sorry, but, um, what I wanted, you know, one thing with this here is, all three of us, we have different opinions. And we haven't really talked about this as a board either, where we kind of stand with the, the old courthouse and the adult probation. And, um, we know that there, there are some things going on right now that are being investigated, so I think part of it is wait for the, the investigation to be complete. But I think we should come together as a board and at least let the, the judges know, this is the next step. Once, if we agree, once the, um, investigation is done, we will look at it, you know, are we gonna go to property A, property B, property C? Or are we going to agree, or the majority of the board agrees, to do nothing? But right now, there's multiple things out.
If I may just jump in, at this point, the, the judges aren't saying they're going to file a lawsuit.
Right.
They're saying is...
Researching the law.
They want to know what their legal position is, and they need to have consultation from somebody who doesn't have a conflict over that issue. So I don't want this to be portrayed as the, the court's saying, we're filing a lawsuit tomorrow.
But should we preemptively hire, find the, find a legal firm now in case of finding and give direction to the county administrator to do so?
Actually, you already gave me that.
I thought we talked about it a week ago, that you probably should discuss it, but we, I...
I'm working on it.
We had a busy week, so that wasn't on the top of my list.
The, the, I'm working on it, and Commissioner, uh, Williams is, I believe, very accurate. You have little choice in this. They, they're, 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 there could be a conflict, and they have every right to request this. I wish they would pay for it, as Commissioner Kokos suggested, but it's unlikely, that's why we're putting a cap on how much funds, if it was their funds, I, I don't think we would be putting that cap on. We're trying to control the expenditure a little bit, but we also know the cap is very ceremonial.
We learned that with the real estate assessment cap with the same attorney, went, went to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think he got out of the county.
So, so let's, let's also put, you know, that there, that, that cap is us trying to control costs, but it's, if it goes past that, too bad.
Just up our resolution, that's all.
Well, we have no choice. Commissioner Williams stated that exactly, we, we have no choice in that. Commissioner Williams, with regard to the ultimate destination of adult probation, I, I, I think in a rather surly way, the judge made it very clear that he only had one option and one option only, that he was agreeable to. Well, um, I've had talks with other individuals and, um, without going through, because we are looking at potentially buying property and, uh, bringing it up here, that piqued the interest. So it may be something that we can work out, but it comes back to, we need to sit down with them, we need to talk to them, and we have to decide right now. They're looking at us, and they're seeing three different opinions. So there's really, they don't know what to do. And, um, I'm not saying that they're right or wrong, but we need to come together, talk about it, get a game plan, and then present it to them. And, uh, Mr. Ennis, if we are looking at, um, putting them into an area where property may be purchased, would we be able to have that discussion under executive session, or we would, we, we, we have to have that in administration session, admin session?
As purchase of real estate and negotiations, I would assume it would go on to an executive session discussion?
That's what I would think.
Now, if you want to have a discussion with the judges about things...
Well, if we're going to tell them about the property, that would be my only concern.
Right.
And that's why I'm looking at going into executive session, but I didn't know if there would be a conflict there. Well, it certainly would prejudice our position if we were trying to obtain a piece of property and we had open discussion about the use of that property, and then the potential purchaser knew, we were interested in, so I, I, I think it would safeguard our, our rights to negotiate a, a fair outcome on the price. Well, I would think so too, but at the same time, I'd like to get legal opinion. Oh, yeah, I...
Well, if I understand your question correctly, yes, you can, you can do the discussion of the purchase of property in executive session. If you wish to invite other persons in to get their input on it, that would be appropriate for the executive session too.
Okay. So, um, we may want to do that in the next week or two, depending on the judge's schedule. Bring them in, have them do that, and then after we give that information, we can go into an admin session, come back out here and have dialogue with them. Would you be agree with it?
I don't know, I don't know what the admin session afterwards would be about, because we would still be negotiating about purchase of property, so...
Well, not really, because we could come back and we, we could have dial- if they would have any other questions on property that we own, that would not fall under executive session material, correct, Jerry? Or could we do that in executive?
You can discuss with the judges, you can have a conversation with the judges in which you convey information to them. That is not a public meeting. Public meeting is where the three of you discuss things between yourselves. So, we have done with the sheriff. Now, if you want to sit down with a person, just convey information to that person or the judges, you are allowed to do that. It's only when you start getting information back from them, and they start asking you, what do you want to do, or what are you going to do? And then you start discussing amongst yourselves what you're going to do. That creates a meeting that you have to do in public.
My question is, if we're in executive session, and we're no longer talking about a executive session material, we would have to... a executive session material, we would have to exit the executive session?
Well, that's true.
Yes.
So...
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Can I say present?
You can say wherever you want.
No, I.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorize Lorraine County Sheriff to apply for grant money through FY fourteen, Brian Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, to purchase a police package vehicle. This request is based upon a mutual agreement in cities of Elary and Lorraine. Ohio Attorney General certified it as, well, sorry, disparate allegation claim in neither city nor county would receive any money until an agreement was approved. Therefore, the allocation of funds will be split as follows. Elary and Lorraine, both sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars, and Lorraine County, sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez.
We've had quite a long morning, and we've still got a lot to do. Unfortunately left, I did see former Commissioner Moore here. I think the first time I've seen him in the hearing room in a decade.
No, he was here a couple of years ago, and Phil was running against me.
Oh, that's right, he did come in.
He did come.
He did come in.
I'm surprised he didn't heckle us.
Well, I wanted to tease him a little, I wanted to tease him a little bit like the old days, but, uh, it looked like he had a, another appointment, so I wish him well in his new endeavor over in, uh, Elaria. He's opened up a, uh, pawn store.
Yeah, More Cash.
That would be Pawn, P-A-W-N, not P-O-R.
Yeah, it's called, uh, More Cash.
More Cash. And, uh, so, uh, maybe we'll see him on TV one day with, uh...
With Pawn Stars?
Sure. Uh, but that, that's over on, uh, I'll shamelessly advertise for him over on Griswold and Lake Road. Uh, so I, I wish him the best in that. Um, I just remind...
I didn't know that was his, I drive by it every day, going back to Lorraine County. I didn't know that was his, okay.
You didn't see More Cash?
I saw it, I didn't know it was Dave's, I didn't... I thought he was into pizzas or something, last time I heard.
Uh, that pizza was, was he odds ago.
Oh, okay, all right.
He, he, he moves through, uh, different adventures. Uh, you know, I have socks that are older than most of the, he gets bored and moves on, so.
I don't think I'm Facebook friends with Dave either, so I wouldn't know what he's up to.
The, uh, but anyway, I, I'm glad to see him here today, he looked well. Um, I want to remind you of my executive session issues, so we can have those discussions, and then I'll yield to the prosecutor. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
I have no further report this morning, Commissioner.
Commissioners' report.
Well, it has been a busy week with all the flooding and talking to the various homeowners and people that had had, um, a loss with flooding, and I just wanted to tell our emergency management, I see they're gone now, but what a great job they, they did in, um, trying to help all these people, and still trying to help these people. So, um, this past Monday, I have my monthly Goodwill Board meeting. Um, we're gonna be moving to our new location in either July or August, over on Keep Court. It's a huge building, a lot of space for, um, different projects that the Goodwill does throughout Lorraine County. And then, yesterday, we had our New World software rollout. Thank you, Mr. Kalo, for doing the opening, uh, welcome speech, and you did a nice job. We had, uh, a nice representation from all the, um, police, fire, and EMS, and park rangers. Everybody was there, uh, to learn about how this is going to, um, come about. It's gonna be a difficult process, but we'll get through it, and New World sounds like they're gonna help us, uh, get there with ease, so I'm looking forward to that. Eighteen months or so, Mr. Cortez, I think we're supposed to...
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping for a better outcome than that. That's, you know, that's, that's a realistic goal, and now we have to set about challenging ourselves to exceed that. We're still short on a few of the MOUs that we need.
Well, I guess there's a lot of people who will have two maintenance contracts, so they're trying to wait until their maintenance runs out on their software that they have now before, so they're not paying for two, so it's kind of a timing issue.
It, it is a timing issue. We, we, we decided to move concurrently. We, we had the big three, the sheriff, Elaria, Lorraine. Uh, then we picked up a few of the, uh, smaller, yet important jurisdictions, uh, in Avon, we're close with Avon Lake. Uh, you know, we have a little work to do down in North Ridgsville. Uh, we have Grafton, I'm sure we're gonna see LeGrange come on board. The, um, it, it's an exciting time for Lorraine County. We are connecting the four corners of the county like they've never been connected before. People think it is, they watch TV, they think we have all that, we, we don't. We're light-years ahead of other counties in, in Ohio, as you well know, with our centralized, uh, PSAP. We're not as, we're not fractured like most other communities. This'll, uh, give real-time updates, uh, within our four borders, so that people out in Kipton know what people up in Avon Lake are facing and vice versa. It'll also bring online all the records from the jail and the sheriff's department, make them available to all the jurisdictions. And, bless you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You know, and, we're doing the software, we've also done the hardware. I, I don't know if that was mentioned yesterday.
It was.
We've improved the communication, we put a million dollars into improving the hardware for radios and nine-one-one traffic here in Lorraine County, when it continued to, uh, unite all of the various, uh, pieces of that communication network, so that we have a very strong communication network. I was somewhat appalled to find that we still have blackout spots for our safety forces here in Lorraine County, especially given the years we're in. It shouldn't happen in 2014. We're, we're, we're taking good care of that. The FCC made it very difficult for us when they tightened the frequency bands and, and narrowed everything down, uh, really caused a huge amount of communications problems. And that's where a lot of the expense came from. And had we not had these collaborative relationships, we would not have been able to afford to, to make those necessary fixes. The next thing on the docket is the, uh, emergency notification system that we're gonna be announcing soon for a community-wide initiative that you've been working on. Uh, so we're almost done with that, Commissioner.
Right.
Uh, so I want to make sure that, uh, we get that out there, too. So, thanks for doing that yesterday.
Yeah, it was, um, all the safety forces are really looking forward to better communicate with each other. Say, uh, somebody down in Grafton gets a warning, uh, they will input that information, and they're up in Lorraine, and they get pulled over, too. They'll know that they already got a warning that day, so, you know, it's, people aren't gonna be able to get away with much, uh, once this communication is all in place and all of it's updated, and so it's really good for our community and our residents and, and our safety forces. So, I'm really looking forward to this rollout, and hopefully it'll go smoothly.
I'm in my report.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it was a busy week again. Thank you to everyone who participated in helping the cleanups after the floods. Uh, hopefully, we'll be able to get assistance here in Lorraine County. Our people are doing a great job. Uh, speaking of that, I had discussions with Mayor Rittenour over the weekend, and Mayor Hunter, in regards to flooding issues, and now they'd like to sit down and have some discussions with us in regards to doing a regional stormwater district of some sort. We had those discussions when we did ours four or five years ago, and they weren't quite interested.
Now they're interested.
Now they're interested. It was, like they said earlier, five-hundred-year floods.
Right.
So, I think that's a dialogue that should be opening. Uh, congratulations to Stacy Starr.
Yes.
Teacher of the year. I spoke with Principal Tom Jommy yesterday, a dear old friend of mine, uh, gave me some information. I'd like to do next week a proclamation for Ms. Starr. She's doing a wonderful job.
She got a...
She's gonna get her red, her red car she's going to be driving around, so, uh, we're working on that. I'd like to thank Teresa for her help on that. Uh, also, I received on the nineteenth, I didn't read it till yesterday, uh, the Democratic National Convention Selection Committee, sorry, Tom, you need to participate on this one.
Yeah, he's, he's present.
Huh? He's present?
I, I read that, that's a good thing. Democrat, Republican, brings money in, and you have my support.
Correct. They are asking, uh, every county surrounding Cuyahoga County to set, submit a letter in support of the City of Cleveland's Host Committee Request or Proposal. Uh, Cleveland's again the host of two thousand and sixteen Democratic National Convention. They've sent us a form letter, but they're asking for the county to be, you know, stated, and then the county offers, and we can talk about our amenities here while people are here for the convention. I don't know who to give this to necessarily, make it in form.
When you don't know who to give something to, when it's up on my desk...
It goes to you, and you'll send it to somebody, I'm sure.
I'll take care of it, just get it to me, all this stuff you got, we'll get it. When is it necessary for?
They have to have it tomorrow, close of business. I received it, well, yesterday morning, I opened it.
Okay, just give me everything you have after the meeting, please.
I'll send, I got this, I'll send you the email, I got this for you.
Do we need a resolution?
Will you, will you send it sooner than Commissioner Kokoski got the resolution this morning?
I had to do it, I had to do it, Laurie.
Just something like this.
If I had a secretary, things might get done sooner, okay? You've seen my office, it might work a little bit quicker, but I write everything myself, so.
If I recall, that was a two-to-one vote there, too.
It was a two-to-one vote there. Uh, oh, I did drop off Alar home check, thank you for the phone call with the flooding last week. I had their check sitting on my desk, I got it to them Monday morning, again, with the cleanup and...
They were in a panic.
Right. Uh, again, thanks to our solid waste, getting the dumpsters out there. I actually got phone calls last night about dumpsters full on East Side of Lorraine, and I gave it to Mr. Bailey this morning to contact Republic slash ally to please get it.
Will they just leave those out there as long as their people are...
Well, you know, the problem...
Well, they're full, and it's a matter of getting around to them, and I think the city's responsibility is to call and say when they're full or packed, but they were laying them against the ones on Garfield and Missouri, there was so much garbage.
The problem, the problem with the dumpsters, we, we really try to help out in the communities, but they really need to be monitored. We're gonna end up with a lot of problems with them. They're gonna be overfilled, they're gonna have...
Hazardous ways.
Well, you know, people are gonna take their yard waste out there, they're gonna figure, well, we didn't get flooded, but I gotta get rid of all these bags of yard waste, I'll go throw them in the dumpsters. We usually, last time we monitored them, but this time we had them mobilized so quickly, weren't able to set up a monitoring crew and a timeframe to use them in. So, we'll, we'll do the best we can with them, uh, but there's gonna be problems, and we'll work them out. Uh, Keith did a great job getting them out there very quickly and getting them dropped in the best locations we could, and I wanna thank the cities, too, because, you know, they gave us locations, and their folks were working through the weekend, and it was, it was a really nice collaboration.
And also, one other thing, before I turn over my report, there is tonight, it's